Good evening, everyone. We so happy to have all of you here in city council tonight. I'm not gonna start calling names because I know everybody in the room. I might miss somebody, but we're happy to have you. I'm gonna ask Pastor Heywood John if he would come up and do us the honor in giving us a prayer tonight.
All right, let us pray. God, we thank you for this new year and this year you've blessed us, Lord God, to take dominion over. God, we thank you for your goodness, grace, and your mercy. We ask you, Lord God, for a special blessing upon the leadership here, all those that'll be recognized tonight, Father, we commit their works to you so that your thoughts and our thoughts will be established. Have your way, and we thank you and commit this whole season to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Item number one is the consideration of December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, city council minutes.
Move for passage.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knox. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Our next item is Chief Austin has some new officers, and he want to introduce them to the county and to the city tonight so y'all be able to know these new officers come forth. Chief Austin, let's give these gentlemen a hand. Hand these new officers.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Everin. About two and a half months ago, we set out on a mission to recruit ten new officers with the intent of having them onboard and ready for the academy at the first part of two thousand twenty-five. And we've accomplished that mission. In fact, one of them has already completed the academy. We had one person who came onboard already certified, and we have the others who are in various stages. But I want to introduce them to you because I'm very proud of the group that we have recruited. And I'll start on my left with Patrolman Colin Etheridge, PSO Israel Brooks, PSO Christopher Tyler, PSO Willie McDuffie, PSO Jonathan Wright. And I do want to note that Mr. McDuffie actually owns a business inside the city. And so we're very proud that we were able to get him to agree to share his time with us. And then the other persons that we have onboard are PSO John Jamerson, PSO Ralph Craps, who is the young man that greeted all of you as you came in, PSO Rudolph Bryant, and PSO Gavin Sodak, who is currently at the academy and will graduate on next week. So we're gonna, as I've said to these guys, I'm going to anticipate that they will go out and also do recruiting because I want them to recruit the kind of people they don't mind calling colleagues. I want them to recruit the kinds of people that they will be proud to work with. So we're taking on this venture into two thousand twenty-five. We're excited about it, and I believe at the end of it, you will be proud as well. Thank you.
Chief, thank you. We are so happy to have y'all come aboard. Certainly, we need your services, and if there's anything that city council can do to help you carry out your job, we know we are here. We all are here for you. Chief, I want to ask you, you said PFO Rudolph Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Is that the preacher?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness.
There's a place for preachers too.
Yeah. Well, we glad, let's give them a hand, council. Glad to have them aboard. Thank you so much. Thank you, chief.
It's an exciting time, and thank you so very much.
Would y'all like to say anything?
Just welcome, happy to be here.
Yes.
Thanks for opportunity to have us aboard, and we won't let you down as possible.
Yes, sir.
And they won't let you down.
Yes, sir. We believe.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Okay.
Thank you very much. We have presentations tonight. We have coming to us Dr. Fabian McGill. He is the principal of the Willie Jeffrey School of Excellence. And so we want to give Dr. Fabian McGill a hand as he comes.
All righty, my friend. Thank you for having us here today, Mayor Butler.
Yes, sir.
And before I begin, I also want to just say Happy New Year's to everybody.
Happy New Year's.
So happy holidays. There's a lot of holidays in between, so we're gonna get them all in there. But first of all, I just want to thank you all for having us today. I think this is my first time being able to speak to the community and speak out in this setting. But we just wanted to bring out the school, start the year fresh, and make sure that the community was aware that we are here, and we are here to set a precedence of excellence. Again, my name is Dr. McGill. I'm a country boy born and raised out of Lakeview, South Carolina. But I have been able to start making Orangeburg my home since then. So just to talk about a few things, if you haven't seen our school, well, you probably have seen the modulators. But we are out on Five Chop Road, and we are in our first phase of the building. So we are gonna start our second phase very soon, and we're looking to be in our building by the end of this year now that we are in two thousand twenty-five. So the excitement is building, and our students and parents are happy. And one thing that I did want to tell the community is that I think what makes us different right now is our culture and climate. If you walk in our school right now, you can walk through the hallways, you hear laughter, you hear learning, and you hear the joy of all things taking place. So I encourage everybody, if you do have some times, our doors are open, and I want you to step in just to see what we are doing, and I also take all feedback, right? So we are, there are always areas of improvement, but I do think we have the best staff in the state, and we are building our students up for the success of the future. And I think our culture and climate is speaking to that. And one thing that's gonna make us different is that our form follows function. So what a lot of us are gonna be experiencing once you step in, come take a tour of our school, is that the students will be able to navigate based on their level of learning. I know a lot of things don't take place immediately, so you may not see that right when you come in, but we do have a lot of teachers that are starting to shift into that space because, as I like to say, we hired blockbuster experts to create Netflix, right? And so what that means is that it's gonna take some time to shift. Everything that our teachers are coming in with, they know it and they love it. And that's what we love to do, is make sure that we hire people that love kids, and we can teach you how to be a better educator. So with that being said, we do have personalized learning plans for those who don't know. And what that means is that we're gonna focus on every individual person to make sure that we can identify what you need to succeed. And then we can find your loves, your passions, and help you succeed in your goals. And so we just want to make sure that we focus on engagement. I believe an idle mind is a devil playground, as my dad always told me, so he kept me busy, right? And then we want to make sure that all of our students are engaged in anything possible. So we're creating clubs, we're creating activities and sports so that way, it's not just your typical, right? But it's other things that they can go out in the community and find ways to succeed themselves. So we do have some pledge cards out and about because, as we all know, it takes funding to do things. And then our students need some exposure. And sometimes, again, it takes that funding to get them out of the community, to show them things outside that they normally wouldn't see. So if you are interested, even if it's a dollar, we can use that dollar to do something, right? So if you are, we do have some cards, we do have some flyers, so please take the time to stop by. I'm an easygoing guy, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to chat. But again, thank you all for the time. I don't want to be long-winded here, but love you all, thank you all, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. McGill? Are there any questions for Dr. McGill?
No, no question, but we've talked.
Yes, ma'am. We gonna work it out.
I'd just like to say you're lucky to have Willie Jeffries with you.
Oh, yes, sir.
Coach Jeffries, you listen to him, you can learn something from him.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. He's an awesome man, and honestly, that's why we have to make sure we do what we gotta do.
There you go, been doing it a long time.
Yes, sir.
Probably fifty years. Longest.
So that mean you can give us the good stories.
Been doing it a long time, first in the state.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But it definitely is an honor to have him and have his legacy to live up to.
Thank you so much. Let's give him a hand clap. We have some proclamations tonight that we want to present to our guests. If City could come with me. Coach Jeffries, if you could come and your family, they come and stand with you.
I can bring my first wife.
Yeah. Person only. Daughter, husband, and all of them, and any grandchildren and anybody. You got any friends you want to come, just go and do that.
Debbie and Gloria.
Come on, Debbie.
Robbie and Deborah Black.
Come on, Robbie. We gonna face this way. We gonna face this way.
Yeah, we gotta face.
This is an honor for us to stand and present this proclamation to Coach Jeffries. Say, come on, you family. And Coach Jeffries has been an icon, a pioneer in this community, and we all love him, and when we want to laugh, we call him. And he can make you laugh till you can't laugh no more. So we want to present this proclamation to you, Coach Jeffries. I'm not gonna read it all, but I want to read some of it. Whereas Willie Jeffries is the namesake of the Willie Jeffries School of Excellence and will be honored by the community members and friends and relatives and celebrating of his eighty-eighth birthday on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Isn't that wonderful? Willie Jeffries was born in Union, South Carolina on January the fourth, nineteen thirty-seven, and graduated from Sims High School and earned a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in guidance and counseling from South Carolina State University. And whereas Willie Jeffries began coaching football in nineteen sixty as an assistant coach at the Lancaster Bar Street High School. And he became the head coach of the Grand Norr High School in Gaffney in nineteen sixty-one, while he compiled six years, sixty-five dash seven dash two marks, and won three in nineteen sixty-four through nineteen sixty-six consecutive state AAA championship. Now, I'm gonna go down here, Coach Jeffries, and read this, so it won't be so long. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Butler, the mayor of the city of Orangeburg, do proclaim, claim January the eleventh, twenty-five, as Willie Jeffries Day in the city of Orangeburg, and I offer sincere congratulations and wishes to Coach Jeffries as he continue to be an inspirational role model for the new generation of students through the Willie Jeffries School of Excellence and for many more happy days in the future to share with family and friends. We thank you, Coach Jeffries, for all you have done, and may God bless you. We want you to turn this way. If the family could turn this way for us. And come on, come on. Okay, our city administrator may want to say something. That's your turn. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, council. It goes without saying that Coach Jeffries is an icon of not only the city of Orangeburg, not only the state of South Carolina, but this country. His accomplishments are second to none, immeasurable in terms of what you have meant to this community, and we are so proud to have you a part of our community and so proud to have this opportunity to honor you and give you your flowers that you so richly deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Coach, now I want you to say something, please.
Face that way?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, to Mayor Butler and Mr. Everin and the entire city council, ladies, friends, ladies in general, not to leave anyone out of the greeting or salutation, I will say my fella tax failed. And I know I didn't miss anybody. This is an honor, but first let me say that the magnitude of an award is not determined by the recipient, but by the reputation of the organization presenting the award. The city of, you all have an excellent reputation. You've made this city so that we can raise kids, not to worry about going out at night. You know, there are gonna be a few not heads, but you all have done such a great job with the city of Orangeburg, and we certainly appreciate it. I appreciate my family being here and friends, my first wife, Mary, of sixty-three years. The way we did it for the young people, we go to dinner twice a week, dim lights, soft music, good food. She goes on Tuesday, I go on Thursday. Don't go the same night. My being a football coach, I do want to enlighten you. I really want you all to know this. I was an assistant coach at the University of Pittsburgh. Equate the year with the money. I need for you all to know this. I was making twenty-four thousand a year at the University of Pittsburgh as an assistant coach, came here as head coach for sixteen thousand. Eight thousand dollar cut in nineteen seventy-two. So Robert Nance is dead. I went to Dr. Nance to talk about it. He said, "That's all we got." So that sometimes money is not everything. So that was nineteen seventy-three to now, but I've been associated with Orangeburg since nineteen fifty-six when I came to school. Now, one thing about the Willie Jeffries School of Excellence, Junebug, Junebug them can't get in. No, I'm just teasing. We take any student. And thank you so much, Dr. McGill, for that presentation. And he didn't introduce our board chairman, but he's here, our steward and our fundraiser. We need money, so you, some of you all, you know, what I call a person with a lot of money, I just say their pockets got the mumps. Budgeting. But I'd like to let you all in what we do in recruiting. Forty-two years as a coach, you really witness everything. I was recruiting this young man, a big old tackle. I don't care about running backs. I'm looking for tackle, I'm looking for lineman. But anyway, we'll take a few running backs. If the lineman may, you know, create the hole, and we can all run through there. Running backs, dime a dozen. But anyway, Big John, Big John was six-six, right? Two hundred and ninety pounds, ran the forty-yard dash in four and six tenths second, could bench press over three hundred pounds. But he wasn't the smartest fella. So I asked his mom, "Where is he?" She said, "Coach, he's over at the church." It was Christmas time, cold. We went over to the church, and to our delightment, Big John was up on the choir stand, leading us on. Leon, Leon, his mama said, "Turn that book around, that's no L." But I am, I'm so happy to see Chief Austin here. And I think one of your young men, his dad was our first, our first, he's the highway patrolman, our U.S. marshal from Newberry. So good to see your officers, they look great. Now, don't be like the guy that had an accident on Euclid Street. He had to drag the man over the hill street to write the ticket. So I'm sure you guys are ready to go.
Thank you, Coach.
Well, I've overdone my. Again, again, we all say thank you so much. And we hope that you can come out to the Willie Jeffries School. Our kids can read, write, draw, and trace. They're good students. We look forward to seeing all of them. Again, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Let's give Coach Jeffries another hand. Nobody's like him. We are so honored to call our next person Ms. Olivia Glover, who's the founder of Glover's Funeral Home. And we are so happy and honored to call her up. And we're gonna ask her to come with her brothers, her sisters, because she got a big family in here. All the family, her children, everybody. She got her pastor here, she got her son-in-law, and everybody. Grandchildren, great-grand, and her employees, anybody else here. She got a big family. You got anybody? Ms. Glover, we are so happy to give you this proclamation. We know that you have worked entirely to establish Glover's Funeral Home, and I thank God I was here when you established it thirty, over thirty years ago. And you have done so well, and we want to, we want to just take this time to show you how much the city of Orangeburg appreciates you for the services that you have given to the citizens in this city. And city council, we all came together to present this to you. Okay, it says, "Whereas Olivia Glover was born September tenth, nineteen forty-two, in Claverton County to the late Reverend James Glover Jr. and Lily Richburg Glover. She is the mother of April Dixon and the late Tara Simmons of Orangeburg, South Carolina. She has eleven grandchildren, Ed, Leila, Denim, Keishon, Paris, Asia, and the late India, and three great-grandchildren. Olivia has two siblings, Reverend Samuel B. Glover and Priscilla Glover Robinson. Two deceased siblings, James Glover and Loretta and Jean Glover. Ms. Glover established Glover Funeral Home in nineteen ninety-four and is the owner and operator serving local families with dignity and compassion. Whereas Glover Funeral Home is proud to be one of the few independent-owned operated funeral homes in Orangeburg, South Carolina. The highly-trained professional staff is committed to offering families truly personal memorials and customized to reflect each unique life. And whereas Glover Funeral Home is based on belief that the customer's needs are the utmost importance and is committed to meeting those needs. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Butler, on behalf of the city council in the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim, June the seventh, January the seventh, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-five, as Olivia Glover's Day in the city of Orangeburg. We offer sincere congratulations and best wishes to you, Ms. Glover and Glover's Funeral Home." Let's give her a hand clap. Okay, we gonna have our city administrator have some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Ms. Glover. Thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for the city of Orangeburg. It's very, very special talent and grace that you have and you and your staff have. I recall vividly the home-going services for my father that Glover Funeral Home handled back in two thousand and seven and what that meant to my family and I with the dignity that you all provided. And I'll never forget that, and I appreciate that. But I know that that was not unique to my family. That's something that you all do and the service that you provide to our community. So I thank you very much for everything that you've done, and you are so deserving of this proclamation. Thank you.
Glover, we'd like to have some little remarks.
I would just like to say, thank you, thanks to Reverend Butler and the mayor of Orangeburg County and the whole county council for everything that you have done for us throughout the time. And I would like to thank my staff for always being there whenever they are needed. And thank my daughter, my second hand, for always being there when I'm not, when I'm not there, when she's not there, I'm not there. My staff is always there, and we love you all and we appreciate everything that you do. Because the funeral home cannot just run by me. It has to be staff that's trustworthy and everything that we need. And I would like to thank you and may God bless all of you and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Glover has some of her siblings here. This is Priscilla, and that's Sam, and these, this is her family here, here.
My pastor, Reverend Anderson.
There's nobody more deserving than Ms. Glover. She knows a lover. We've always been just really close, and if you mess with her, I'll send you to her. But we're just thankful for her, and she really deserves it. She's so humble, and she's, not only she is, well, she is a good person. She's a good businesswoman, but she's a good person, and that makes a difference. We thank God for you.
Appreciate y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Bishop Butler, Mayor Butler, the city, for this great honor on behalf of my mother, to my aunt and my uncle. They definitely played a valuable part with my mom opening this business when it first started. So thirty years, we so blessed to be celebrating God's grace and mercy, like she said, to this amazing staff. Everybody on staff, just raise your hands so they'll know. So like she said, we could not do it without them hours of the night having to get up. It's a lot, it's a sacrifice, so it's really a lot. A lot of people see the outside, but they really don't get to see the inside, all the hard work and the sacrifices from our employees. So we really appreciate them, family, nieces. My mom, she is a person who have sacrificed a lot. She have taught me how to be strong, hold things together. She's made a lot of sacrifice for me and my sister, my sister's kids, my nieces and nephews, her grans, and she just taught me how to be a strong woman and to make a lot of sacrifices as being a mom. And I love and I appreciate you, mama.
She's gonna force me to get up here. You know, I tease her all the time because we have the same color hair, if you notice that. And I get teased about that all the time. But she's a wonderful sister. Should I say that you the elder? Sister, but we are certainly delighted to have her, and she plays a comfortable role in that respect. And city council, I don't think you could have, be her and Willie Jeffries probably the two best persons that you could have got. And I had to say that about Willie Jeffries because he would be all over me if we're not mentioning something about him. But anyway, God bless all of you and Happy New Years, and hopefully this will be a wonderful year for the city and the job that you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you all. Let's give the Glover's family another hand. We are so honored to have our sheriff here tonight and our Judge Dash. We appreciate you and our assistants and all of y'all from the sheriff department. Let's give them a hand clap. We going to the next item, item number five. Mr. Everin is coming to present that item to us. And if anybody have to leave, you can just leave quietly, please. We appreciate all of y'all for coming. Do come again.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Happy New Year to everyone. For your consideration, the next item is an ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately point zero-three acres of real property with improvements located at the corner of Russell Street and Middleton Street. Uh, eleven ninety-two Middleton Street, formerly known as eleven ninety-eight, uh, Russell Street. This is, of course, is the, uh, the, the green building that is, uh, quite well-known at the corner of Russell and Middleton Street. There's a, a local buyer and investor that, uh, would like to purchase the building for seventy-five thousand dollars to, um, uh, put condos and retail space, uh, in the building. And this ordinance would authorize the sale of that property for the, for those purposes. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Everin, for item number five, before I read the ordinance? If not, authorizing the transfer of approximately zero-point-three-zero acres of real property with improvements, if any located at the, at the corner, uh, of Russell Street and Middleton Street. Eleven ninety-two Middleton Street, formerly known as eleven ninety-eight Russell Street, with the county tax map number is zero-one-seven-three-one-three-three-five-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero and other related matters. And we need to entertain the motion.
Mayor and Council, I move for the adoption of the transfer of real property.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Kit. Second by Councilman Strowman, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, the next item for your consideration is a resolution to support the municipal association twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six legislative advocacy initiatives. Each year, the municipal association asks, uh, their members to pass a resolution in support of their, their initiatives for the upcoming legislative year. I will not read all of the initiatives, but they are before you, but I will just highlight a few. Some of the initiatives are protecting the authority of cities and towns to regulate short-term rentals within municipal boundaries. Uh, allow cities and towns with no property tax mileage to impose a mileage within certain limitations. Allow cities to place a municipal, municipal project sales tax penny on a referendum for city residents to vote on additional revenue for capital projects in their city. Uh, support funding for police equipment and infrastructure. And to support legislation that allows retirees to return to work with no earning cap placed on their retirement benefits. It's just a few of the initiatives that they, uh, legislative advocacy initiatives, I should say, that they are, uh, pursuing this legislative year.
Okay, are there any questions or concerns about this initiative? If not, I'm gonna read the resolution. A resolution to support the municipal association two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six legislative advocacy initiatives. We need a motion.
I move that we adopt the twenty-twenty-five legislative advocacy initiatives.
Okay, council, I mean, motion's ma- made by Councilman Green. Second. Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Okay, now, Mr. Holly, do we have any DPU matters?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, there is no visible.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are going into executive session. And in executive session, we will discuss, uh, discussion of negotiation incidents to propose contractual arrangements and receipt of legal advice, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seven, seventy, A, two, vape ordinance, Hill Chris lease agreement and discussion of employment compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline and release of an employee personnel matters, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy dash A dash, uh, dash one. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, do we go into executive session?
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, eyes have the motions carried. Thank y'all for coming tonight, we appreciate you so much and, uh, do come again. And I don't think we'll be back to, out to open session. And thank you, Ms. John, for being here, we have Ms. John and the children, thank y'all so much.